And the steering committee for the comprehensive plan. Today is May 12, 2025, and I'd like to welcome each of you here. I'll call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Dawn, and I'm Jim Fradenberg, and I would like to call the special session of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan Update Steering Committee meeting to order. I also like to call this special meeting of the Town of Kernersville Planning Board meeting to order. That's it?
I think they're... Is it on streaming yet? Okay, so we're set. All right, we've got the streaming, and this meeting will also be available on the YouTube channel for the Town of Kernersville. Our first item is a public session, Presentation and Discussion of the Comprehensive Plan Led by Consultants Tesca Associates, Inc. and Fries &amp; Nichols. And I'll introduce our Director of Community Development, Catherine Garner.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see so many of you. I'm glad we have such good representation from all of our boards and committees and then land use planning friends in the community. So, real quick, just a few updates for our steering committee members. Thank you to the four of you who were able to join us at Spring Folly last weekend. We've got some Town of Kernersville power banks for you. Thanks for the extra power over the weekend. Couldn't have done it without you being able to help wrangle all these people to talk to. Tonight is just a presentation from Tesca and Fries &amp; Nichols to the Planning Board, the Steering Committee, and the Board of Aldermen. We welcome all of our guests, but we won't be taking public comment tonight. It'll be interactive with our boards and committee members, but we're glad you came to listen in. And then tomorrow night, we would invite you to come to the gardens at 6:00. It's drop-in from 6:00 to 8:00 for our first open house. And so for our steering committee members, if you could please, 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 plan to be there. We are a small and mighty staff, but we have more tables than we have hands to staff them. So if you are planning to come see us, we'll make sure you get a T-shirt so you can be in with the staff on the cool T-shirts. So with that, I will turn it over to Tesca. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Goldstein. I'm president of Tesca Associates. We are an urban planning and landscape design firm. I'm here with Andrew Dunham, who's also from Tesca, and Danny Wilson from Fries &amp; Nichols, and Alexis, where did you go? Alexis Garcia in the back. And we are working together with all of you on an update to the Town of Kernersville Comprehensive Plan. And so we really enjoy the fact that you're able to all come together tonight, the three different bodies, to listen to an update on the planning process. And we want to get your thoughts overall into the vision for the plan. So we're going to be a little ahead of the open house tomorrow, which will be more of a general nature to get input from the community. But we thought we'd share some of the data and the research we've done to date and get the thoughts from the Steering Committee, the Planning Board, and the Town Council. So we're going to give an overview of what a comprehensive plan is. I think you all know that, but just to get us all grounded between the difference between planning and zoning, and then a little bit of a taste of the existing conditions. And we've got some questions interspersed. Then Alexis is going to walk us through the next steps of engagement. Tesca Associates, like I said, is an urban planning, landscape architecture firm. We've done a lot of plans throughout the country, and we really specialize in working with towns of different sizes. We're very comfortable with the size of your town and the different land uses. We're just amazed by the variety of options you have across the Town of Kernersville, and we're excited to work with you on that. Fries &amp; Nichols is heading the engagement effort for this planning process and the transportation and infrastructure elements of the plan. And Tesca will do, will lead the land use and environment-related and economic development components. In terms of context, every time we ask the question, "What is special about Kernersville? What are its greatest strengths?", we almost always immediately get, "Heart of the triad," or "The transportation network," or "Being in the middle of High Point, Winston-Salem, Greensboro," that it's such a convenient location and such a special, small-town atmosphere. And so when we look at some of the characteristics we're going to talk about tonight, we're comparing the town with some of the neighboring jurisdictions. Just a review, you have a comprehensive plan, a land use plan that was adopted in 2014. It's been updated since then based on developments have taken place. And a comprehensive plan is, this is what's really important, it's not a regulatory document. It is an advisory document that tells the larger community what the policies, objectives, and vision for the land use and related components of the growth of the community. Zoning is a regulatory document that governs individual projects. And when considering a zoning case, as you do, you always refer to the land use plan as part of that zoning review. But it is a longer-term vision, 10 to 15 years, that we're going to be working with you on over the next year. It's also very useful in terms of marketing to the broader community, who you are as a town and what type of growth, infill development, community character, downtown, new growth, that you'd like to see. And so it's a very effective way for people who are interested in investing in the town to know what the town would really like to have. It's a guide for decision-makers, for capital projects, for infrastructure, for water and sewer, for roads. So you really need to know what you want the land uses to be to plan that infrastructure in an efficient and effective manner. In terms of the components, where are we headed with this? Well, clearly, land use is one of the fundamental aspects of a comprehensive plan. But related to that is community character and place-making. What makes that land use map really come to life? Economic development, you've got strong industrial and job growth, very strong growth in the community. And how do you want to see that develop over time? Community facilities, programs. We were just at the Park and Recreation Center. Beautiful facility that was just built. Transportation, infrastructure. The impacts of regional growth. How is Kernersville growing in the context of the larger region, which is in some extent two related regions? And then an implementation plan. And that's what's critical. It's not just a plan to put on the shelf, but to live and breathe in the future. And this is your current land use plan. It shows both the town boundaries as well as the dashed line. You can see that the top is ETJ, where the town has jurisdiction over zoning and land use. And you can see different phases of growth throughout the town. Yellows and oranges tend to be residential. And then you've got commercial and red. You can see the downtown, the other business districts. So this is the current land use plan. One of the questions been asked is, are you starting from scratch? We absolutely are not starting from scratch. We're building on what you already have. We want to look at what's working now and what you'd like to project as future growth. But we're certainly starting with where you are now. Brad's done a great job posting all the development decisions that have taken place over the last several years. So we've got a good sense of what types of developments have been proposed, where the market is. And this is the zoning map. You have over 70 zoning districts, which is kind of a lot for the town your size. That's something that you don't want to take a look at. And you can see how interspersed they are, and you really need to zone in on your computer to look at zoning. And zoning is extremely important because that's really the regulatory elements of deciding land use and consistency with the zoning and possible plan developments and annexations that take place beyond that. I'm going to turn it over to Andrew to walk us through some character issues.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, Scott's really good at the technical land use stuff, and I personally prefer to do the flowery, waxing poetic about community character. So historic preservation, there are a lot of historic properties in the Town of Kernersville. The South Main Street District itself has 53 individually listed. There's also Kerners Folly and other homes and historic structures throughout the community. So of course, that's a consideration. How do we take these assets? And how do we elevate them? How do we kind of continue to have development that respects the historic form? More about history and architecture. So Kernersville has a very traditional southern vernacular architecture. You've got bungalow craftsmen, colonial styles. And red brick is common, both in the historic structures in the community as well as the newer structures. So the design language of Kernersville really gets carried forward into these new developments, whether it's apartments, whether it's the hospital or retail developments, and kind of really builds a sense of community cohesion that this is a place that values its historic architecture and has a new twist on it. And then just the last thing about community character is events. Events are super important, not just because they're fun, but because they're a great opportunity for people to neighbor as a verb, so people can come together, enjoy music together, support local businesses. And it really kind of builds a sense of community cohesion that, you know, may not otherwise occur just from everyday-to-day interactions. And I'll bring it to Scott to ask some discussion questions.
Thank you, Andrew. So this is a very high level. Obviously, just a few slides on land use, community character. Alexis is going to take notes up here. But we first start with, what is that you most value about the physical character and identity of the town today? And just a reminder, this is for the three boards. We're not taking public comment tonight. That's going to be tomorrow night at the open house. So tell me more, what do you mean by charm?
Just unlike the cities and towns that are around us, it feels like in the downtown area, we've been able to preserve the small-town charm, small-town feel. And when I was talking to people at the folly and I was passing out those flyers, that's, I mean, it's the main thing. They just want to make sure it stays small-town feeling and more inviting to, you know, citizens and guests.
Excellent. Does anyone want to expand on that? Or do they have another idea about what is it that speaks to the character and identity of the town?
We're green.
Green, tell me more.
The greenway, trees, parks.
Speak into the mic, please.
The greenway, the trees, the parks.
The parks, mhm, okay. Any other elements about the strength of the character of the town? Physical identity. What is it that you want to preserve and build on?
I think Kerners Folly, having that house, is important to the community. The depot, I think, is important, as well as the, we've got a museum. So, you know, those historic buildings.
Excellent. Anything we missed so far? Small town, we've got the green nature. What else is, are there specific elements of the identity? Kerners Folly was mentioned, that really speak to Kernersville? Okay, well, let's move on to the principles. If we know what we like about the town, the small-town feel, what elements of that or principles should be used in developing new development? Whether it's infill and redevelopment of existing parts of the older parts of town? Or, as Andrew said, is how do you incorporate some of those elements in new growth and development? Is it the color? Is it the materials? Is it the form and mass of the buildings? What makes a good design when you're reviewing a project or looking at a new project? Keeping the cohesiveness of the new buildings as they come into town.
With the old buildings, yes.
With the old buildings.
Which I think we've done a good job of.
Speak into the mic.
I think we've done a good job of that. Just nice to see that continue.
Like to see it continue. Any other principles? When you hear about a new project, what are the different things you go through as you read staff reports and are reviewing projects as they come in? How do you know if it fits into the character of the community?
Well, I think our community has the perception of being a family-based community. So I think as we bring in new development for retail, recreation, housing business, whatever it is, that we, you know, work to keep that because that's what keeps all the young families wanting to come to Kernersville.
Family-oriented community, absolutely. Any other principles of good design? Brick, you like brick. I like brick, too. Yes, so there's definitely the materials and the architecture. See, a variety of different architectures. Not like one architecture in town, but it blends together this cohesiveness across these different styles, isn't there? Okay, let's move on to the third question. Is you have a very wide variety. For a town of 24,000, 25,000 people, you've got a much probably wider variety of housing than a lot of other towns do your size. And that means that you can have different kinds of families, different types of households, live here and grow here and stay here and not have to leave. What types of housing are needed? If we're planning for the next 10 to 15 years, what are the types of things you'd like to see in new growth and development or redevelopment of existing areas? What types of housing are needed?
More single-family homes.
More single-family homes, okay. With yards, okay, all right. Affordable, affordable, single-family homes. What other types?
I think the challenge is based on the land and its proximity to the downtown. And as you move out, I mean, you're going to need apartments. You're going to need townhouses. Yes, single-family homes are fabulous. Challenge there is where are you going to find the land in close proximity in town? So I think density, density is the challenge. I mean, I think as the residential flows into the commercial districts, you know, how do you create that flow that doesn't have too much density? By the same token, allows the land use to develop and smartly grow without too much congestion. I think that's...
So at different points in your life, you might need different types of housing, right? So you might be young, go to college, and want to rent an apartment with a friend. And you might then be a family and have kids. And then you might be, you have all those types of housing represented across your community. And you're right, there's a certain land value element to it in terms of planning for new growth. Is there any particular type of housing that's not enough of, that's hard to get? We've heard a little bit about maybe empty nester and seniors. Maybe there's, could need some more housing there, we've heard so far. But maybe there's some other types that you think are needed? Okay, well, let's keep moving. We've got a lot to cover tonight. But if you have additional thoughts on housing, we can circle back to that. So we do want to share a little bit of data. As I said before, we compared the town to some of the neighboring communities. And you can see a pretty steady stream of population growth. As of 2023, we're about 27,500. You've probably gone over 28,000 by now. Your rate of growth from 2000 to 2023 is the highest. If you compare, you might not be able to see the bottom. So I'll read them off. You've got Kernersville to the left in grain, Clemmons, Greensboro, High Point, Lewisville, and Winston-Salem. Now, some of those communities are much larger, so they're having more growth. But if you look at the rate of growth over the past couple decades, it's been pretty steady and growing to nearly 30,000 residents. But there's been a lot of planning done over those years. So it's not like there's just been growth happening that's been not planned. In terms of race and ethnicity, about 68, 69% of responses to census consider themselves white, about 15% black. And you've got Asians, some other race, two or more races. The way the census does it asks a separate question about Hispanic origin. So those, about 10% of the community who could be of any race. So you've got a real mix of folks in town. And also, we've seen a lot of growth in households. So Kernersville is to the left in terms of households increase from 2000, from about 7,000 to 12,000 households. But you can see some of the other towns and cities have grown more, but the entire region is growing. And so what this really points to, you've got strong reasons for people to want to live here and are moving into the community because you've got a lot of desirable things that attract people. That's small-town feel. So a lot of this is how do you manage a small-town feel while accepting and growing in a way that makes sense for your community and meets the context and the architecture and the design elements that we want to build with you? In terms of median income, about 16, about almost $70,000 median. You've got a wide range in that. And it compares pretty favorably to the other communities. Some are a little bit higher, some are a little bit lower, but pretty strong income level. And that's been very steady and growing over time. And then, as we talked about before, in terms of housing tenure, you're close to some of your neighbors. Some have higher, so the really small communities of Clemmons and Lewisville have a higher percentage of single-family. But this growth of about 56%, so majority homeowners, but still have a lot of housing stock of other choices. And so that really supports the economic development because people will tend to move in and rent an apartment, see if they like it. And if they like it, they might buy a town home and later a single-family house. And that's kind of how the housing market works, is that people move into a town, try it out, and then hopefully eventually become homeowners in the community. In terms of housing values, those are strong as well. The median home price is $264,000, which is right in the median of your peer communities. But look at the bottom, your housing vacancy rate is very low. And that, when you're at 5% or lower than that, 4.5%, that's called a very tight market. And that's what's pushing the housing prices up because people are moving in because they like the town. And that is generally a very strong signal of a strong housing market. But it also shows there's demand for more housing to be built. When you have a low vacancy, obviously, that's a signal to the market to build additional units. So one of the questions we had early on was, you've got all this industry and employment. How many people are coming into the town every day to work? How many people live and work here? And then how many people live here and work somewhere else? So that's going left to right. So 18,000 are people who work in Kernersville, come in every workday, or maybe they're remote, but work in Kernersville and they live somewhere else. About 1,400 people live and work in the town. And then 10,500 live here and work somewhere else. And what that really points to, it's a very desirable place to have a business here. But also means it's another indicator of a strong housing market because we're showing more people coming in than going out every day. We're going to pause in a minute if there's any questions about that. And we're going to have some more questions. So town residents, what are the top types of employment they have? Healthcare and social assistance, number one. The healthcare, you've got two big hospitals in town, the VA and the new hospital. Retail trade, manufacturing at 11% is pretty high. Administration support, so business services, and then hospitality and food. So that's where people work who live here. And then this screen is about what industries are in Kernersville. And transportation, warehousing, obviously, is a very strong growth sector of the economy here in the town. And so that's the highest one. That's a bit unusual nationally, but it's really been very strong in terms of the economy of Kernersville. Retail trade is number two. Manufacturers, if you add transportation, warehousing, and manufacturing together, you've got a third of all employment. Again, business services, administration, and then hospitality and food. And just as I showed that the homeowner values were increasing, so is industrial space. And you can see from the left to the right, pretty much a straight line up in terms of asking rent, which you can see on the top. That dark blue is the asking rent. It's been steadily increasing over time. And that's for the, not to get too technical, but that's sort of the eastern Winston-Salem and the Kernersville area, which is shown on that map. And that, in that market area, there's 9 million rentable square feet of industrial warehouse space. So it's a very strong, thriving industrial market. And then one of the questions that's been coming up a lot in the engagement we're doing so far is, what's the demand for retail? So if we wanted to have, say, more businesses in the downtown, you've got a fantastic downtown, but there's maybe some room for growth there and expansion? As well as are there nodes for retail in other areas of the community? South Main, 66, et cetera. What is the top projected retail spending? Food at home groceries, $22 million. You've just had a couple grocery stores move and become bigger, Food Line and Lowe's. I mean, that's because of the growth. Everyone says that everyone's buying everything on the internet. Not really true. Retail is still growing. Food groceries are still growing. Home remodeling and maintenance are number two. Entertainment, recreation, number three. Restaurants is four, and then home goods. So if you start to think about what types of retail that you could attract into the town, they're kind of coming to you, but these are some of the top segments. Yes, ma'am.
Target is expanding.
Uh huh.
And they're bringing the full grocery store area to Kernersville.
So they're bringing a full grocery store, plus they kind of cross some of these other categories in terms of home goods, for example, as well? Okay. Okay, so in terms of what you all think are some of the greatest economic strengths, what comes to mind? I already said pretty much everything's growing, but what do you think the strengths of the town are? If you were going to talk to an investor company in the community, what would you say the biggest strengths are of the town?
I think with respect to all the warehousing, the central location
Absolutely.
would be key for distribution and additional warehousing.
The highway network, the additional bypass being built, the strength of the airport, all relate to being a very, FedEx and others, Amazon are choosing it because they like the location. And that means they also like the labor supply. What else is strong?
The location would probably be one of the bigger ones. We're located in the center. So you've got
Right.
High Point, Winston-Salem, Greensboro. So we're going to grow whether we want to or not. And also the medical, we've got a lot of medical.
Got a lot of medical, yep. Got a lot of medical, yep. Yeah, so you're at the center of a growing region. So you're in the attractive part of investment in a growing region, which gives you a little choice to really project through this comprehensive plan what type of growth you'd like to have. Which is the second question, what types of industry do you want to attract?
I would like to see a little more high-quality restaurants.
High-quality restaurants?
Yep.
What type of, what else in terms of economic development you'd like to see? Well, another way to ask this is, when you have to leave Kernersville to do something, what are those types of things that you're traveling 10, 15 minutes to leave the town to either go buy or get a business service? Why do you, what do you have to leave the town to get?
Arts. The arts.
Arts, excellent. Arts and entertainment, yeah. Okay, then the final question is, a lot of this is about balance. What, so right now you've got a lot of growth in the industrial sector, you've had a lot of retail open, particularly in the outer areas of the town. What would you like to see? If there's a headline about the town, I'll take one of Alexis's questions, is a headline in 10 years of successful plan, what would the headline of economic development success look like? Vibrant, okay. What types of industry would have opened if you were successful in 10 years? With that, I'm going to turn it back to Andrew, who's going to take us through environmental issues.
Thank you much. All right, so this is just a section on the environment and resilience. So just kind of a background on that, some of these natural features play a really important role in, you know, preventing flooding or mitigating stormwater runoff. So these natural features are important to take stock of and important to consider in any planning effort. So the first slide is about open space. That was really addressed in Kernersville's recently adopted Parks Plan, but it's still really important to look at as part of a comprehensive land use plan. So over here, open space is, you can see there are some notable gaps in parks. So this map shows, in dark green is open space, then there's a one-quarter mile radius and then a half-mile radius, so there are definitely opportunities in town to improve access and perhaps include it as part of new development. And then another one is flood risk. So this, if you know the creek system around the town, then this shouldn't be too much of a surprise. A lot of these low-lying areas, a lot of them are very wooded, which is good. That means not a lot of people's houses will flood, it means it'll kind of take the natural course. So yeah, a lot of the areas around creeks, those are either actually flowing water, regulatory floodway, or a flood plain, all of which are not really conducive to development of, you know, homes or businesses, but they can make for pretty nice open space amenities. I know that the Kernersville Trail runs along one of these flood plains. So there are opportunities to leverage this to make it an important asset for the community. Just kind of depends on also coordinating ownership and things like that. Much like that, there's also wetland network. So wetlands are important for a few things, they mitigate water pollution, they help filter stormwater runoff, they're important habitat for animals. And yeah, basically, wetlands should always be considered in any sort of development proposal. So those, you have some kind of key corridors in the south of the town and also kind of along a lot of these established creek beds. So talking broadly about environment and resilience, we want to know what are the open spaces, the natural areas, the natural features that are present in the town now that you would like to preserve as the town grows?
I walk the Kernersville Greenway quite a bit and I would love to see the creek itself revitalized because, yeah, there's trash and all kinds of stuff down there.
Sure, absolutely. That's a great answer. Thank you. Any other natural features or any, maybe expanding on kind of the state of the creeks or other waterways in the community?
I think the creek at Fourth of July Park would fall under the same reasoning, too. So that would be the creek at the Greenway and the creek at Fourth of July Park. We're already doing a lot with the creek at Ivy Redmond Park, it's just not real visible to the public right now. We're going to put some trails along there and then it'll be more visible.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, moving on, so there are a lot of natural areas, open spaces, farmland, that's, you know, very attractive, very nice, but is also potentially sites that will be developed. So when we think about development, how should development kind of address these natural features that are honestly very pretty and very nice and very good to have in an area? How should development approach that and how should we consider them in future land use decisions?
I think you have to consider what the, where it is, who lives around it, and what the potential use is. So if we're, if we're talking a neighborhood with eighth acre lots, that might not be the best use for that land. However, you know, I've heard a lot on the planning board about people would like to see houses with acre lots or something like that. And I know it's more expensive for the builder to build and they can't make the money, the numbers work, but it would be nice to see some development like that in Kernersville.
Absolutely. We've worked in a lot of communities that are kind of adjacent to sensitive natural areas and right near that, they really try and make sure there's a lot of, you know, just land given, not too much paved over for buildings and things like that, so.
I think preserving the green spaces and developing those green spaces in conjunction with the housing we know we need, that's going to make the community more attractive. I don't know why this is. Okay, so taking Pope Park as an example, that we can develop something around that that preserves that park's quality and helps grow that park as an asset to our town.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, we've, we've seen a lot of new development proposals that really kind of lean into their natural features, maybe that becomes a greenway, maybe that becomes a naturalized open space. So yeah, definitely there are ways of approaching it that create public benefit. And kind of the last question is just something about how much do you think green infrastructure should be prioritized in the future? So green infrastructure, that can be anything from like rain gardens on the side of the road and sustainable development could be anything from like clustered homes that are clustered in small lots to preserve open space to actual green buildings that are energy efficient or even like solar panels. So yeah, just, I wanted to get a read on how much that should be emphasized, or you believe it should be emphasized in the future?
Well, as someone that owns the only building in Kernersville that has solar panels on the roof, it's not worth it, so. I have lots of experience with it, but now, you know, there are, I do like the green building design and I think the new Deer Building is going to be all green. So, you know, that is very, very beneficial and helps keeps our costs down or their costs down for power and energy usage and that kind of stuff, so. Yeah, there's a place for it. I'm also from Vermont where they've, you fly into Burlington, Vermont tomorrow and all of the beautiful cow pastures that used to have black and white cows are now massive solar firms and that's all you see on the landscape now, so it's not pretty, so.
Absolutely, there's definitely a trade-off and also just an upfront cost. These things aren't, if they were, you know, cheap, they'd be everywhere. So yeah, for sure. Any other thoughts about how that kind of fits into Kernersville's future?
Can I add, I would, farming is a part of our community. I think we just have to respect the farmland as well, somehow incorporate it, so we're not just, as you said, building soldier farms and we just need to respect the farmland at some level as well.
Absolutely, thank you for that. All right, well, I will pass it over to Alexis and I will take over her duties on the board.
All right, and now for something a little different. So next we'll talk a little bit about transportation and community facilities. Our role is to take a look at transportation and multimodal options throughout the community. One of the first things you'll see on the screen is a thoroughfare plan, and so this is outlining where all the different thoroughfares are going in the city, both existing and planned for the future. And what this is going to do is identify where that growth opportunity is and where it has been. There's already many public improvements that have been planned on the books, coming in the future, and so there are roadway improvements on the way now, but with this process, when we do the land use plan, our team will also be looking at the thoroughfare plan and identifying where those opportunities for growth are and what improvements to the thoroughfare plan and roadway connections and infrastructure are going to be needed to pair with that as we're going, looking into the future. And then we're also going to take a look at bike and pedestrian connectivity. The town does have a bike and ped plan, it was most recently updated in 2020, and it looks at the different greenway network and the sidewalk network, so what is that bike and pedestrian connectivity through the town? There are a number of bike routes kind of suggested in the plan now, and so what we definitely want to take a look at is how can we improve the connectivity and fix those gaps in the sidewalk network? Because as you can see with the sidewalk marked on the map in the orange, they're very disconnected, and so we want to see how can we make better connections with those greenway areas, the sidewalks, integrating more of that bike and ped network, as well as connections to those key destinations, going to downtown, going to the parks, the recreation centers, and connecting all of those. And then here you can see the daily traffic volumes, the darker the color, the more intense the daily vehicular travel. And as expected, the highest rates are on 421 and I-40, but what this really is going to tell us is where are those increased traffic volumes and what does this mean for creating new connections? Do updates need to be made to the thoroughfare plan? How can we look at traffic calming opportunities and how does this integrate with recommendations for the bike and ped plan? How to increase traffic going maybe multimodal versus vehicular traffic? And then we'll also be looking at community facilities. This map's a little difficult to see due to the size, we actually have another copy of it at the community meeting tomorrow, but what you, what it's showing is where the different facilities are in the community. And as part of the comprehensive plan, we'll be taking a closer look at those community facilities and the service areas and any improvements or recommendations that should be made to them. Because as you can see, they're currently distributed throughout the town in different areas. You've got your parks and your recreation areas that coincide with the park map that you saw a little bit earlier. And so thinking about, once again, the connectivity with the roadways, the multimodal, how can we make sure that there is proper access, both vehicular and bike and ped, to these different facilities? So just a couple of questions on the topic of transportation and community. We wanted to start with, what is an ideal transportation network look like for Kernersville in the next 10 to 20 years? We've talked a lot about development opportunities, but we also want to think about what that relationship to transportation is. How are people navigating? How are they getting there? What does that mean for traffic? Should we be thinking about different modes beyond vehicular traffic? Should we think about bike infrastructure, walkability, those things? Or do they not matter?
So I think we should, it'd be really nice if we could come up with a way to integrate Greensboro, Winston and Kernersville with rail.
Okay.
And even out to Clemens or wherever, the tracks are in place. The cost, I'm sure, is huge, but you know, there's some, there's some new players in the market like Bright Line down in Florida and New York, or in LA, so it might be, and then on to Charlotte, right? I know, I know you can drive to High Point and go to Charlotte, but it'd be nice if you could just hop on a train here and end up in Charlotte, so.
Yeah, explore those opportunities. How can it happen? Maybe it's not specifically Kernersville, but the larger network, look at an opportunity. Expanding sidewalks, making sure that walkability, those gaps that we saw on the map a moment ago.
With respect to the greenways, is there a plan to ultimately connect them with High Point and Greensboro and Winston?
Yes, ultimately, in the long term, they would all connect cohesively.
But then even internally within Kernersville to expand and grow those, I would think, because that would, that would help residential development, that would help the commercial development somehow, those are, because people do ride bikes, like to run, walk, so to the degree that they can be expanded and connected downtown. I think that will help with the development of Kernersville in general.
Yes, so there is a greenway plan now, but through this plan, we can look at additional recommendations in order to expand that as well.
Yeah.
So on the same kind of topic, is it a priority for Kernersville to become more walkable and bikeable? This feels like a yes/no dichotomy of a question, because we've already talked about the greenways and the sidewalks, so it does sound like this is a priority, so if we were to look at infrastructure improvements, this is something maybe the people in this room would be positive about.
With perspective transportation improvements, a thought occurred to me literally this past Saturday at about 2:00 in the afternoon, Main Street from like Lowe's all the way back to downtown was so crowded, it was like a parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm thinking, well, how do you, how do you change that? How do you get that flow? Now, you can't run buses up and down there, I don't think, but I think the answer is you expand your development of additional retail properties outside of that commercial strip. And I'm not sure exactly where those are or how that happens. Having said that, you certainly don't want to detract from the development in downtown. I mean, you want to, you want to enhance that and, but it seems to me that somehow the answer is to expand other commercial areas within Kernersville. the answer is to expand other commercial areas within Kernersville while still maintaining the desirability of wanting to go downtown and all those merchants on Main Street already. So I'm not sure how, what the challenge is there, but.
Like you said, it's partially a land use idea of locating retail in other locations. So there's other options. You don't have to come downtown, but we don't want to discourage that. We want you to come. And so that also could be different modes of ways to get around. You can park and then walk to your destination, maybe more bikeability to be able to move around, or maybe even additional routes nearby so you can still get to your destination and maybe this is not the only route that you would take. All things to explore through this process. Well, I do feel like we answered the question of how important is it to expand off-street paths and greenways? And it sounds like on the same idea of bikeability and walkability, there'd be support for expanding that and making sure there is that comprehensive connection to improve things like traffic, walkability, and those different options. And so I guess the last question is, are there any specific areas of focus for transportation improvements that we should be looking at, in your opinion?
The big thing I'd like to see is if we're talking greenways, we're talking about expanding our current greenway to Salem Park, or Salem Greenway, which then goes to downtown Winston, we shouldn't have to wait 20 years to, from design to actual inception of the project like we have on our existing greenway. Because, yeah, there were some people in this room that were on that committee back in 2001, 2002, and we just finished it last year, the year before, I guess two years ago. So it's kind of, if there's a way to develop those types of things to make getting downtown easier, getting to Winston, I think people would use it, or even to Greensboro. And I know Greensboro is working on theirs out to Triad Park. And I know that when we built Macy Grove Road, I don't know how many years ago now, that they put a tunnel underneath it for a greenway. It's there and ready to be used, but we haven't expanded that at all. So just something.
Yeah, definitely a good thought. Any other considerations?
So on traffic improvements, there needs to be either turn lanes or roundabout at Linville Springs and Dobson-Kerner Road because the new Macy Grove extension is going to draw traffic through there and it's already an intersection that doesn't work very well. So I would also challenge the people here tonight to think about other areas where maybe the traffic load is necessitating a signalized intersection. I think maybe the John Deere facility that's green on Bowdenhammer came up. I think maybe that intersection is problematic too, Bowdenhammer and Mountain. But if anyone can think of other areas that we need to have focus on that, this might be a good plan to get some of those in.
Keeping the supply chain vendors interested?
Yeah, we've got some major supply chain organizations here. We want to keep them interested and keep them here.
So in terms of making sure that there's improvements to facilitate the business?
Yes.
Yeah, so for a good example, any of the trucks going to Deer and as such, coming away from Deer with an excavator on the back, they have to navigate down a four-lane highway that really should only be two lanes. And that's Bowdenheimer from Main Street to Mountain Street. And it's super narrow down through there. So I don't know if we can do something about that in the future as we're looking at roads. I don't know if that's a town road or a state road. I'm not sure, but I think it might be state because it's highways. It's part of, I don't know. But anyways, that would be a place that gets very dangerous. And then you got people, there's not turn lanes, so you got people turning left across traffic and it's a mess, so.
At some point, as there's more growth, will you, would it be an option to incorporate some public transportation to get people into the big box areas from neighborhoods or what have you? I just wonder if that's an option. I used to use it when I was a kid in California and I came by the house and I would ride downtown. I just wonder if that's an option as there's growth. It may not be feasible now, but at some point.
It's definitely something to look into. Like you said, maybe not feasible tomorrow, but definitely a reasonable thing to think about, especially in the larger area in the region. Maybe it's a more regional system or something that can be connected to and definitely built on over time. Any final thoughts?
I think a lot of us are hoping that the Hopkins Road, Macy Grove, or not Macy Grove, Big Mill Farm will alleviate a lot of traffic from downtown. We're hopeful, but I don't know what it's going to end up looking like, but I think it will.
Yeah, we took a look at that when we were driving around on our tour and looking at how that connection could alleviate that congestion by providing another route. So definitely when that finally comes to fruition, it's going to be a big win. Any other final thoughts? All right. Well, I'll keep us moving along. And so our last segment here is a little bit about engagement. We, this is a community-driven plan. This is something where we really want to get out with the community and make sure that we're getting input. We're just consultants. We're here to facilitate a process, but we want to make sure that we're hearing from the people who live and work here and to make sure that all of those thoughts and considerations are integrated directly into the recommendations of the plan. So as we're developing this process, you have those of us up here who are really just facilitating the process, we're working closely with town staff to understand what are the existing conditions, what should we know about as we're developing the plan. We do have our steering committee who is serving as a guide to help us to make sure that we are in the right direction and making recommendations that are going to be fruitful for the town. We're working closely with the planning board and the Board of Aldermen. We're all here tonight. And then especially the Kernersville community. And that's where our public engagement efforts come in. We have a number of open houses and community meetings scheduled. We have pop-up events. Town staff was at the Spring Folly event and I know some of you were also there. We have focus group interviews that we're actually doing over two days. We had our first one today and we're doing more tomorrow. We have an online survey that's live now and I hope everyone in this room has already taken it. And if not, you've taken it by tomorrow. We do have a number of questions online. There's an interactive map where you can drop a comment onto the map. We have a project website to stay up to date. And the steering committee serves as ambassadors for the plan. So it's not just us and it's not just town staff, but all of you here tonight are ambassadors for the plan to go out to your homes, your communities, your jobs, to make sure everyone knows about this plan. So we do have our project website, plankernersville.com. You can see it here. And there's a place for you to sign up for updates. You can share ideas on the ideas wall. We have the online survey, ask questions of us. But this is just your place to get more and more information and stay up to date with the process. And then most importantly, we have our community open house tomorrow, May 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Botanical Gardens. And so we will be there. There'll be a lot of interactive stations, talking about a lot of the things that we talked about today, so we can hear from the greater community what they think about transportation, economic development, about land use planning. And so making sure that we can have these conversations in person, face-to-face, and hearing with them. So it's not only online and it's not just in this room, but also going out and having an interactive event. And so I hope all of you are here tomorrow. And if you're not, you took the online survey and I will check in the morning. And so with that, we can take questions here in a moment, but our next steps, we have our open house. Please go to the project website so you can share your ideas and make sure that your friends and family share their ideas. And then we will have our next steering committee that's really going to focus on developing those goals for the plan based on all that input that we received. And so I'll give a moment to see if there's any last minute burning questions before we close out our joint committee meeting. No other questions?
I'm curious, the online survey, are you getting a lot of response from that? I mean, are people taking it?
So we launched it about two weeks ago for the Spring Folly and to date we have 61 responses. And we have a number of responses on the project website, I think you said, on the comment? Yeah, about 12 responses on the comment map as well. So we're already getting feedback today.
So how are y'all getting this information out? Because I'm on the planning board and the first I heard about it was when I got my packet for this meeting tonight, that you will have a meeting tomorrow night. Is it on the town website?
Luanne, we've been posting it on the town's Facebook page. The Chamber has posted it as well. Parks and Rec posted it on their Facebook page. We've got it on the town website. We passed out about 550 flyers, I'd say, of Spring Folly, because we counted how many copies we made. So we've got it posted at Town Hall and then copies of the same flyer that we handed out at our front desk and at the main front desk here at Town Hall. And we did bring it up at the last planning board meeting. I think you may have been absent. So we've been trying to get that word out. And then we've asked the Chamber to share it to their network as well, in addition to posting it on their Facebook page.
Jeff was hustling. He was hustling. And we'd be happy to distribute, you know, social media banners that you can all put on or something that you could forward out to your email list or anything like that. We have not done that in our process yet, but we can definitely talk to town staff and maybe the Chamber about getting flyers out to all the different businesses. And we're also, we're also at the beginning of the process. This is the very beginning. And so like you're saying, you're hearing about it now, you've now heard about it and you can help us get it out, get it out there. Because we've been out here for about two weeks getting the message pushed out. So you're definitely correct. Of course. Yes, sir. We're planning for June 9th is our planned date, unless we need to reschedule that.
Will there be additional open houses or is this the only one?
There will be two more open houses after this one.
Tom, we've also got it on our list to, sorry, standing close to that speaker makes the echo. We've got it on our list to be at some of the other social events around town, the Summer Lake Movies at the Park, the Honeybee Festival in the fall, to keep getting the project out there. It may not be the exact same activity at each one, but we'll be, we'll be at those events. Staff is tag teaming those efforts. That's why we say we're small and mighty and we need your help.
I would suggest you get it out to the civic clubs and let them get it to their members.
Perfect.
We're going to have a Juneteenth celebration this year on the 19th of June. And it would be nice to be able to get some type of communications because you're going to be giving information to a group that don't normally get this type of information at that event, you know? And so I think whatever we're doing, if we could have some type of flyers or what pamphlets so we get a more diverse group of folks to be coming to this meeting. Because a lot of folks that go to Juneteenth don't get the information that we're getting here today.
No, that's excellent. Early on at our first steering committee meeting, that was actually one of our questions to the group was, do you know of different ways that we can get the word out? So this is super helpful to understand what methods are we not thinking about that are going to be unique. So we can definitely look at getting information out to the Juneteenth event. All right. If there's nothing else, then I believe the next step is to close the joint session.
So we're going to do two adjournments, actually. Jim, you want to go ahead and start?
We will adjourn the special session of the planning board. We are also adjourning the special session of the steering committee for the land use plan update.
And for the Board of Aldermen meeting, I'd like a motion by an alderman to adjourn. Got Chris Thompson and a second by J.R. Gorham. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you for joining us. Please help spread the word about this open house and the future open houses. Thank you for joining us tonight.